Good morning, everyone. It's seven o'clock on Wednesday, April 27, 2022, and we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee to hold to order. Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Here.
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 Hicks, Sabstic Fish.
Here.
And Bird, Sabstic Kwame.
Here.
And Robert Sabstic.
We have a quorum. First item on the agenda this morning, we have our friends from Gate City Bank. We want to welcome them up to the podium. And I know we have a bunch of friends here, so welcome.
Absolutely. Thank you, yeah. Mayor Shire, City Council, thank you very much for allowing us to join you today. My name is Tyler Worth. I am the Assistant Vice President and Retail Manager of Gate City Bank here in Fergus Falls. Along with me, I have Brian. He's an Assistant Vice President and our personal lender, and he is also the subject matter expert of the topic we're covering today. We also have a contingent of our bank staff with us here today as well. The Neighborhood Impact Program aligns really well with the mission of serving our customers as well as providing a better way of life. Our investment in various neighborhood programs since 2005 throughout Minnesota and North Dakota has made a significant impact on many cities' efforts to maintain affordable housing and keep neighborhoods fresh. The city of Fergus Falls Neighborhood Impact Program was established to encourage the preservation of homes for homeowners and to add to the long-term value and life of their property and neighborhood. We provided each of you with an outline of our Neighborhood Impact Program, and before we take questions, we would like to present a check as a token of our investment to create a better way of life in Fergus Falls.
All right. I don't keep that, though, right?
That might be a little hard to put in your wallet.
They pull it a couple times.
All right. Thank you very much. Yeah, yes, my pleasure. All right.
Yeah.
I would love that.
Is this in your agenda, podium?
Were there any questions regarding the program that we can address today?
Anyone have any questions? No. Has the program been successful? This is the third year, is that correct?
Yes, definitely. And I think we've seen a growing contingent of people who are taking advantage of the program.
Sure.
And I think Brian can say that working with the city has been a pleasure in Fergus Falls, so.
Well, we appreciate the partnership and appreciate the partnerships with all of our local investors that are making those commitments to our community. So thanks again for all your work in the community.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we'll call on Kent Mattson, CEO of Lake Region Healthcare, to talk about initiative, vision, and community impact. Morning, Kent.
Morning. That's a pretty impressive check. Do you have any more? As close as I get to it, as a nonprofit organization, we take donations. All right. Well, there we go. I think. There we go. All right. Thanks, Lynn. Well, thanks for the time here this morning. Wanted to just say thanks to all of you who serve our community. I think sometimes all of us who benefit from the service that you give forget how hard of a job you have. And making good decisions, making wise decisions, making informed decisions isn't always easy, but making the right decision if you follow your values always yields the right outcome. So thanks for your service, particularly over some past times where you've made some difficult choices. But no, it's not easy, but thank you. Why are we here? We wanted to talk about some of the things that have happened over the last couple of years while we've been in a period where we've really been in the four corners of our building, not out in the community very much. We've got a unified mission, vision, and set of values across our entire company we wanted to share. We've got a new strategic plan that we developed that we want to share, and we've got really a renewed commitment to being centered on you and here for you always. A couple of themes that we use internally, and now we want to share and lift up externally. So we've kind of had this two-year period overshadowed by COVID. The city was very helpful, and the citizens were very helpful through that process to be patient with us as we changed things, also to provide a lot of volunteer support and economic support, which we greatly appreciated. But even before we went into this period of COVID, we came into new leadership at Lake Region Healthcare. And one of the things we recognized is maybe we weren't out there sharing our message with the community and the community stakeholders like yourselves to inform each of you about us as a community resource, because we're a 501(c)(3) organization. We're for the community. We're from the community. And sometimes I think we were maybe a little bit of the best kept secret, and now we're trying to get out and share this message. Katie Johnson, who leads our marketing and communications program, is with us here today, and she is really helping lead a lot of the messaging that we've got going on. So the enterprise. You know, people used to think about Lake Region Healthcare as just a hospital in Fergus Falls, but what we like to do is just share the message that we're more than that. We're a mid-sized regional health system. In Minnesota, that means there's about nine systems that are big. We're sent to care as the smallest system, as about 15,000 people associated with our organization, and then it goes on up. There's eight others larger than that. Sanford's not counted in those nine, because Sanford's that primarily in North Dakota and South Dakota, but does have Minnesota presences. When you drop down to the next level, midsize, there's five of us. There's five of us left in the state. And what we are is we're community-based organizations that are more than a community hospital in, like, a Wheaton or a Roseau, which really is there to serve the purpose of providing kind of lower acuity care, but having an emergency department that doesn't handle as much volume, but really being there for emergencies and urgencies, and then working with a larger site to get people somewhere where they're really sick, like Roseau down to Grand Forks. There's Alimir in Alexandria, kind of our size, and Ridgeview is somewhat like us, but there's not many of us left. There's about 64 small community hospitals throughout the state of Minnesota, so there's not many hospitals. But we've got two hospitals in our family of companies right now. Right now, we run two names primarily. Lake Region Healthcare is an operating company, but we also own Prairie Ridge Healthcare, which has a hospital and a clinic in Elbow Lake as well as Morris. So you see Lake Region, you see Prairie Ridge. We're really one and the same company, but we've got a couple of different brands. And then Mill Street Residence is the brand where we use for our assisted living facility. We've got, so, two hospitals, 10 clinical locations, a cancer care and research center, which is really unique. There's no other community-based hospital in Minnesota that has radiation oncology, which is what we have, and that's where people who are, in some instances, deathly ill, get treated to recover. And you don't want to have somebody driving 60 miles or 120 miles one way when they're radiated. We've got the senior living community, which is Mill Street Residence, about 64 units there. We've got roughly 1,100 employees across all of our companies, give or take 120 physicians, nurse practitioners, and PAs. Our revenue right now is about $163 million. We've got a target to grow that to $200 million, and we think we can get there in about four years. We're headquartered in Fergus Falls, and really importantly, we're community-owned and we're community governed. Our board members come from the communities that we serve. We are not owned by a system. We're not controlled by a system. We work closely with systems, but we are truly independent. This gives you a picture of us. The map is pretty obviously, it centers us where we are. The map that shows a green center surrounded by blue, that's our primary service territory, which is in the green. That's where we have the majority of the market, and there's a mechanism to measure all these things. The blue is a secondary service territory. That shows we draw patients from those areas secondarily, but sometimes they go other places as well. You can see on this service territory map something unusual. You rarely see a horseshoe. It's usually a blue blob completely surrounding the green blob. That just shows Sanford's health strengths of the market running right up to Barnesville. So when we work with Owen Thompson, and he integrated in our organization some years ago, we really put a stake in the ground to make sure that we're serving the community as far as we can to that north and west, but Sanford really holds the strength of the market up there. This shows where we have medical centers. Like I said, a hospital and surgical center, Locken Clinic in Fergus Falls, Elbow Lake, we've got a hospital and a surgical center there and do ambulatory care. We've got a clinic. And then down in Morris, we do have an ambulatory clinic as well, and we have a surgery center. It's got a fairly strong practice for a smaller community like that outside of a hospital. And then, like I said, we've got Mill Street. Then we have regional clinics out in Ashby, a full-time clinic out in Battle Lake and in Barnesville, and then we do kind of office hours throughout the week at some of the smaller locations. Our leadership, myself and Katie are here. Since I've been CEO, that started in May of 2020, I've been around the organization for 25 years and started full-time and eventually became the CEO there for a couple of years, which is a really interesting time to start a career leading healthcare in a pandemic. Wouldn't recommend it, but it worked out. We recruited Kami Patterson and Roberta Young to be our kind of two main operational leaders. Wade Jerkis has been with us a long time, still there and is leading a cited project right now that is going to bring a better electronic medical record to us all. Danielle Lesmeister helps us lead our Prairie Ridge Hospital, and then Naomi Schmidt is in our Chief Medical Officer role. She's a podiatrist, but she does administrative work. Then our Board of Trustees, John Erickson is currently our Board Chair, Carrie Brimhaller is our Vice Chair, Laurel Nelson is our Treasurer, and we've got really a strong geographic representation of the communities that we serve. Scott Bauer lives in Barnesville, Jeanne Ennin lives in Morris. So we tried to create a diversity of geography on our board, and we've got that represented well. We've had some turnover recently. We've had long-term board members like Steve Rufe, who served with us for over 40 years. We really were blessed to have a service for that long, but he said, you know what? I'm ready to hand the reins over to the next generation, or two, because he felt that we were in a good place, and he was comfortable after all those years of service and good guidance. So we have a good blend of new board members. Our newest is Rebecca Basil, who is a nurse and nurse practitioner that works with us. So she gives us that medical view from a nurse and an APP view, and she's also from Service lines, I won't go through this in detail, but we try to provide not only primary care that you see at a community-based hospital, but cancer care that's very comprehensive. We've got a strong orthopedics and sports medicine group, and we added plastics and reconstructive surgery. And so one thing about our size and the geography, we're able to bring programs to bear in a community-based hospital setting that really aren't available in smaller community hospitals because you might not have the market, you might not have the expertise, you might not have the other physicians and the staff to support a practice that is unusual to have in a community like radiation oncology or plastics and reconstructive surgery, but we have them here because of the scale that we have spun up and that we can sustain. So a couple of discussion points. We're trying to make these interactive a little bit because we don't want to just be talking at people in the days of Zoom and remote meetings. Sometimes we're speaking at people through a screen, but, you know, a few questions. Were you aware of the size of our footprint? Any questions or concern on, you know, how we work across geographies? And then anything that surprises you about the description of our enterprise? Enterprise just means our company. Healthcare calls them systems. We don't like the word "system" because it has this negative connotation. It has, like, institutionalized medicine that's controlled by some foreign city. We call it an enterprise. That's just the assembly of companies and our people and our places and other things. Any questions I can answer, just kind of of those sorts of few? Jim?
Yeah. Are you looking at staying local and not being bought out by, like, Sanford?
Absolutely. Yep. Yep, and that's the fear internally, that's the fear externally, that Sanford is in a position to come in and buy us out. We redefined our relationship with Sanford Health, and we just really tackled it square on to say Sanford Health, and before that Merritt Care, and before that St. Louis, they've been our partner in healthcare. We can't do our jobs without them, because many people that we can't take care of in our community go to Sanford and Fargo for something like a higher acuity. We want to get those people back here, so we just embrace that reality. We need them in the past, we need them into the future, and so we really did redefine the relationship that we have with them. One of the things that you'll hear about is our EMR, which is the backbone of our business, electronic medical record. It's what our clinicians use to chart your care. It's what our business people use to code encounters, bill encounters, and get paid from insurance companies and individuals. It's a comprehensive system that probably touches 85% of our business. It's really a big deal. We knew that we needed to get something that was unified, so we chose Epic, which is the number-one healthcare EMR in the nation. They've got the market in Minnesota. We're surrounded by Epic sites. We aren't large enough to buy it direct from Epic. They're very selective of who they sell to, but they have a program that's called Community Connect, and they allow larger systems who have Epic to make it available on their platform to smaller organizations. So we're just on the cusp of being not able to buy it ourselves, and because of that, we're called a large connect customer. So we'll have a direct relationship with Epic. We'll have a relationship with Sanford Health to make Epic available, so when folks come to Lake Region Healthcare, and if they get care at Sanford as well, they'll have one medical record. When our doctors see somebody who's been up at Sanford and is getting their care primarily in Fergus Falls, they'll be able to take a peek at the care they received in Fargo. And so that model is something that we are capitalizing on. It's about a $25 million investment over five years. And one of the benefits is that you, as a healthcare consumer, will have a better portal, a better experience that you can pull up on your phone or your home computer to see what's going on with your healthcare, communicate with your healthcare providers. And for people that treat at both locater or both organizations, you'll be able to see the information from both sites. So short answer is, we're not intending on being bought out. They're not intending on buying us out, but we did come up with a partnership to make that record available. For a regional healthcare system, we provide value to them, and so when we're strong, they're strong, and vice versa. But our strategy is to remain community-owned, community-governed, because we think that the best decisions are made by those who live in our communities that we serve, and we know that we can do it.
Okay. I know that I do all of my stuff through the VA, and sometimes they send me here rather than go to Fargo or here to Sebo.
Yep, and we provide support. We provide physicians and nurses and some other staff to the VA nursing home, and as the VA thinks about coming in with a larger presence into the community with the new 10,000-square-foot clinic, we're trying to find ways to partner with them for lab services and the like, so we can support each other.
Yeah, they're without a doctor right now, so.
Yeah.
They need two.
That's a theme. Any other questions? Great question. So one of the things Katie are really passionate about this place, so we could talk for a day and we'll not spend a day with you. We'd like to, but we won't spend your time like that. Let's see. You may have to advance to the next.
You'll have to click on the top of the PDF. Go ahead.
Need to start over.
You should.
Okay. I got it. I got the helm. All right. One thing I wanted to share, our new mission and vision. We partner to enrich life through health. That's our mission. And a couple of pieces on that. We partner with everybody. We don't do this alone. We partner with our patients. We partner with our staff. We partner with our providers. As I shared, we partner with Sanford Health. We partner with public health. We partner with the police departments. And so in everything we do, moment by moment, we partner with people. We just wanted to capture that in our mission, because that's really at the core of what we are. Enriching life, we can't always heal people. We help people move on sometimes when we can't heal them and cure them, and so they end up dying, but we can have them have an enriched life through that journey. We also focus on wellness, exercise, as well as kind of the typical things that we've done to take care of people through a clinic or a surgical center. Through health, we're a healthcare business. Sometimes we get a little bit distracted by other things, so we want to keep that firmly in focus. We're in the business of taking care of people's health. Vision, a little bit more words. We want to create an exceptional, innovative, and personal healthcare experience. So on the front end of that, exceptional is another word for excellent. Innovative, we've always got to be forward-thinking, particularly the practices of medicine, which is continuously evolving and we always have to get better. But personal, that's how we distinguish ourselves from larger organizations or big-box medicine. Personal is for our employees and our providers to have a better experience, where they feel valued and not just one of the numbers. Personal for our patients, the same thing. Sometimes they go to larger locations, they feel like a number, and we don't want people to feel like a number. We want to feel like a name and a person, and that's what we can deliver differently in a community-based setting. So that personal healthcare experience is really important, and what you find ourselves that continues to drive you day in and day out is we take care of our friends and our families and our neighbors. So we see the people that we take care of in Fleet Farm, at the restaurants in the community, and that's different than the anonymity of a larger community. Where sometimes a doctor or a leader can kind of sink into the background, we're amongst our people, and that's why it's really important that we're there for them in that personal way. And again, we want our people to excel and our communities to thrive, which is one of the reasons I'm here today, because you're our core community, and we really appreciate the opportunity to serve you all. Our values, we updated our values, and these are the guideposts that we use to make decisions every day. Excellence, collaboration, all the way to innovation. You see innovations in a couple of places, but it's really important. And respect is something in our space, we have to respect people, particularly because many people trust their healthcare to us and sensitive information, and that's something that we respect, particularly in a smaller community. We need to make sure that we keep things confidential. This is where we kind of put all of the things together, our mission and our vision and our values, and this is a one-pager that oftentimes we put in front of community meetings like this that really helps us kind of keep our eye on the ball. And again, every day, that vision helps us focus on what we want to achieve and what we want to be. So questions, any thoughts about our new mission or our vision or our values? Got feelings, you know, positive, negative, kind of the words? This is the first, one of the first times we're getting out. We've done some test runs with some community-based organizations, but any thoughts on kind of the words we used, or any thoughts on our ability to achieve that vision? Any unique partners you think that are critical to including as we fulfill our mission? Any feedback you've got for us?
Andrew, what do you think?
You know, I like it. I think the buzzwords that you hone in on are critical to communities of our size, you know, being personal. You touched on confidentiality, trust, respect. Those things are, I think, what set you apart from going to Sanford. Sure, you might find somebody more specialized, you know, at some of those other settings, but we can get there, you know, working through our local clinic and hospital as well. And, you know, personally, we do all of our healthcare at Lake Region, and I, you know, I'll be confidential myself, but I do think you guys can live up to that mission, and you do. I mean, I have an appointment with my son later today, and we feel that care is personal and innovative, and we have everything we need right here in Fergus Falls. So I think you're picking the right buzzwords. I don't know if that's an appropriate way to classify that, but, you know, personally, I think you're living up to those words, and you're able to provide the level of care that you're talking about.
Appreciate that. You know, one thing is, people come to us, they don't always have an experience that they expected, and sometimes we let them down. We're humans, but we really value feedback. So anybody that lifts up a negative experience, somebody gets on that, and we've updated a system or process structure to capture that feedback and fix it. Whatever is broken, whatever didn't work, we fix it. Continuous improvement. Healthcare is always an evolving type of industry, and yeah, we're not perfect. We will make mistakes, but hoping the mistakes are these little ones. But always share and lift up, because we're not perfect.
One of the things I really like, and while I have the floor here on earth, is, you know, like, I can honestly text the doctor or, you know, through the messaging system on the portal. I can sit down at 7:30 at night and say, hey, my son is grabbing at his ear, and the next notification on my phone is, there's a prescription ready at all grades. I mean, it's amazing. Absolutely amazing. I probably shouldn't say that, but it's, I mean, the personal level of care and the connectivity at all hours, and, you know, or if we need an appointment, we get it the same day I call, I mean, within an hour, and I'm over there. So it's, I don't think you can get that anywhere else. Maybe you can, but I haven't seen it, so.
And this new portal experience will give you a better communication pool. It'll be noticeable, and that's where we've got to be. Connectivity is important. Scott, you were going to say something?
Not everybody that visits a hospital walks in. So as you were mentioning, your portal or your partners, to what degree does that partnership and involvement deal with things like ambulance, EMT services, the helicopters that come and go?
Yep.
I don't know, you know, a lot about those businesses. I have no connection that way, but we see the helicopters come and go from time to time, and, you know, ambulance is in the neighborhood, and just wondered to what degree the hospital has, I don't know, influence or activity with those areas?
That's a great question. That's part of that partnership piece. So locally, we've partnered with Ringdall Ambulance. They have a family-owned business and operated the next second-generation business, and we're with them every day. We train together. Their EMTs spend a lot of time in our emergency department, a lot of communication there. We do not own an ambulance service in Fergus Falls. We own and operate an ambulance service in Grant County through Prairie Ridge. We've got an excellent leader down there who is very active in the EMS network around here. Mutual aid's a big thing. Our ambulance in Grant County was tied up the other day. Ashby had to come in and bring somebody into our hospital there, so, but collaboration there. We do not own any air ambulance service. The closest is Fargo, and that's typically the helicopter that you're going to hear and see coming over your houses by us. We did invest some years ago in really a state-of-the-art helipad that makes it easier and faster for people. They get on the helipad in the building, they come down an elevator, they're right in that care area, and so the flight team can get that direct access in their in-and-out. The one thing that we're benefited all by is Fargo is a Level 1 trauma center, which is relatively new at their new center, and that's really a big deal. And that took off faster than they thought. They're getting folks coming in from northern Minnesota, central Minnesota, Dakotas, Montana and Wyoming, and it's really been a benefit because they've got some very highly skilled trauma services there that being 50 minutes away by drive is really beneficial to our community. Good question. Yeah, Jim?
Are you looking to expand at all with the footprint of the hospital and everything up there? I mean, into the neighborhood?
Yeah. We had some folks up yesterday. You know, over the years, we and the people before us had the foresight to pick up some homes, and picking up those homes allowed us to build our new clinic five or so years ago, something like that. But for getting those homes, we couldn't have that new state-of-the-art clinic, which is really beneficial. We've been acquiring some homes around us as well, being very respectful of some historic neighborhoods around us. So we have a prospect for green space, and we're going to do some master facility planning, looking at what we have for an inventory of buildings right now. We have outgrown everything we have. We need more space, and we've got to do some renovations in other communities, but Fergus Falls, we've got to figure out what we're going to do for administrative service, therapy service, and also looking at an ambulatory surgery center and building up some space for some of the specialties we've brought in. So we don't know what we're going to build or where we're going to build it, but we do have to put some bricks and mortar up. But in this day and age of virtual healthcare, we have to be very careful where we aim our capital. So more to follow on that. I expect that maybe later this year in 2022, we'll have some information.
How about getting into heart and heart surgery and that kind of stuff? Is there anything? I mean, everybody now goes to Fargo or elsewhere.
Yep. Right now, we're meeting community need with one cardiologist, Joelle Coleman. She does some procedures up at Fargo that we can't do locally here. That seems to be working right now. That seems to be working right now, and, you know, there's always the prospects to expand something, but we want to make sure that when we're expanding, we're doing that with services that meet the most need. And cardiology seems to be met okay right now by working in partnership with other systems, but it's something that we've got an eye on. We added a APP to support Dr. Coleman's practice, so that created some more access, but we'll watch that one closely. Geography-wise, we feel pretty good about the footprint that we have. We've got a lot of opportunity to serve that broad geographic area, and we don't want to grow for the sake of growing. We want to have smart growth on services in that, you know, 80-mile-by-50-mile-wide service territory. We want to really serve it optimally. Strategic plan, I'll touch on this here. What you see across the top, there's pillars of healthcare excellence. When we started our new leadership, we adopted student principles of being a high-performing healthcare organization. It's a common operating structure within which to organize your annual goals, to organize your work and to manage the plate, the things we take on. So every year, we set goals in the service pillar, the quality and safety pillar, and the community pillar. Every 90 days, people put new action plans together to make sure that we're attaining those goals, and at the end of the year, we look at the metrics and the benchmarks that we set and the targets that we set. So we want to celebrate success or figure out where we need to improve. So we're in our second year of doing this really fully, but it's something we wanted to adopt to help the people run the businesses that we expect them to run with more structure around it. Laid over that are our big rocks that came out of our strategic plan. We want to focus on cultural transformation, having an excellent healthcare experience. Financial vitality is really important. We are a mission organization. Our mission is to provide healthcare, but if you don't have a margin, you can't fulfill the mission. So they're tandem, in tandem. Diligent growth, smart growth. We mentioned, do we get into cardiology or do we expand some orthopedic services? An organization alignment, that just means we're coming together as three kind of distinct organizations to really serve as one. But foundational for all of this, we've got a big project going on, that Epic Community Connect project that I mentioned before. That's where our folks are spending a lot of their time. So November 1st is when we convert to that new system, and there'll be a lot of people waiting anxiously to make that happen, and also making sure that we've got strong confidence that we'll go live that day, because we're going to go live everywhere. It's going to be exciting. I mentioned before, you know, people think, all right, you're getting a medical record through Sanford, or in some other community, you're getting a medical record through Alina. Step one, here we go. You're going to get taken over. The data shows us in our area not to be true. Alimir Alexandria has had a relationship with Centrica Health for their EPIC record for like a dozen years. They remain independent. Lakewood in Staples, same arrangement, they remain independent. SCMC down in Morris, they remain independent. Tri-County in Wadena has their health record supported through Centrica, they remain independent. So the data shows us that if you operate your organization right, just by joining a medical record of a larger system doesn't mean you'll become them. So we'd like to show that slide to say, not just, believe us, but this is what the data shows. So again, that enhanced EHR is mission-critical to be a better healthcare organization and employer and caregiver. Investment in medical equipment, we are making some and have made some pretty significant investments to make sure that our folks and our patients have state-of-the-art. Linear accelerator, it outlived its useful life. That's what we use to provide radiation therapy at our cancer center. We invested in the latest and the greatest and the best unit that was installed and provided service to our patients for the first time, I think it was last week. And that's really a big deal. It's a big investment, but it gets great technology. And as we think about how we replace that into the future, it's more digital now, and we won't have to replace as much hardware, so it's mostly software updates. Infusion chairs, we did that through a solid effort through community philanthropy. The people that sit in infusion chairs for a long time, day in, day out, it's very full, now have better chairs, more comfortable, more safe, and that's really a big deal for patients who need to be taken care of really well. We added a new CT scanner to our main campus, and we're adding a PET CT this summer, which is another diagnostic tool that helps us plan radiation oncology therapy, but also helps us have additional diagnostic imaging outside of that. And PET CT in a community hospital is really rare, but again, the scope and the scale that we have, we can bring those things to our communities, so we don't have to bring it here in a van and a truck, or people don't have to go somewhere else to get it. Mentioned before some of the growth that we've had. We've got a relationship with a spine surgeon, Dr. Broadway, who started providing procedures locally in Fergus Falls rather than running them to Duluth where he was practicing or up to Fargo. And that has been a significant line of business for us that has met a lot of community need. He's a great surgeon. He doesn't do a surgery unless he needs to, but we've also upped the ante there by bringing Laura Suggs in, who helps with our spine care program and navigates patients to where they should go. For instance, we bring chiropractic therapy in our partnership with local chiropractors. She helps navigate when chiropractic care is helpful, and then when they need to get to see some other provider. Allison Goddard joined us recently with a broader dermatology practice, and she's been great. Dr. Brett is an experienced physician, which, who's at our Battle Lake site, has kind of a higher standard of, or higher level of care that he provides in a community that is, got some higher acuity and needs. Barrett Speedall from the area here joined us recently in the wound center, and she's been a great addition. We love when our hometown people come work with us, because they're like us, they get us, and they're known and trusted, and that's really important in this personal healthcare setting that we want. Dr. Holkop from Wapperton is our new general surgeon. He is really, again, upping the ante at a higher level of services that we can serve more community need, rather than have people leave us for some things we can do here. Then finally, Chelsea Johnson is our plastics and reconstructive surgeon, which is really a big deal for a community like ours. And you hear plastic surgery, think like Beverly Hills, facelifts and things like that. She does that, we do that. If any of you want to do that yourselves or give a gift, we can make arrangements for that. But the reconstructive piece, the first thing that she did in our surgery center was reconstructed an arm of a lady who got mauled by a dog, or the face of a child that got mauled by a dog. So now we get that condition stabilized in her ER, get them prepped for her to heal that person better, and that's really additive. So the reconstructive side of it is also supportive of our cancer program and the breast program. So it's not just facelifts and things like that, it's reconstructive that really makes a difference, and her practice has already taken off. So it's really exciting. We are going to be hiring some nurse midwives for the first time ever in our organization. We've heard from the folks that are having babies that they want a midwife experience, so we're going to deliver that to the people that want that. We also have a family medicine practitioner who has an OB practice, so a female OB physician will be joining us later this year. Katie Bressler, who is Mary Bressler's daughter, Mary's from the community Conley, and so a second-generation coming back. Mary worked with us in our dermatology practice. Katie's going to be excellent, so we're really excited about that. We're looking for another neurologist. We're looking for another pulmonologist and other ologies that we're looking for. You know, we're like anything, the workforce has hit us hard. Folks are having existential discussions in their mind and with their family about, where do I want to be? And there's a lot of people that want to go to their hometowns. So we're losing a couple of providers that want to go back up to Duluth where they hailed from, or Utah where they hailed from. We want to capitalize on that as well and get some of our community members that grew up here, back here like a Katie Bressler. So we're in a weird stage like everybody else's, and we're losing people to things that we really can't control, like geography and family, but we want to be, you know, really an employer of choice and a provider partner of choice. But you'll see some changes coming around us. Be patient with us, we'll find folks to step into those shoes. In the meantime, we've got some folks that are helping us out on like a locums basis too. So any questions? We talked about the My Chart piece. Any thoughts that you wish we had for services? And then, you know, are there other things, you know, maybe the one thing that you would tell me or others about Lake Region, based on what you know of your experience from what Andrew shared as well and what others have shared? So want to be respectful of your time. Again, we could talk about this all day. We feel like we've got a lot of good things to talk about, but any feedback on these pieces, any thoughts? Okay. We'll leave this with you. We've got some more words and certification. What we like to do is we like to publicize things that we've earned, not that we pay for. We don't like to pay for stuff. We like to earn things. And being on a top 100 community rural hospital, that's a big deal, and that's something that we strive for. It's evidence-based, and our staff and our providers earn that. And then regional healthcare landscape, at some point in time in a smaller setting, we'll talk about this, but this is the areas that we have to focus on, on where systems are, where other community hospitals are. And if you look at our locations, we've got a nice strategic location between Alec and Fargo. We serve a broad population. We've got competition in a physical sense down in Morris at SCMC, but we have to recognize we have digital competition. And so how can we serve our customers in that personal healthcare experience? We think a lot about regional healthcare landscape and making sure that we're serving that large area really well. So thank you for listening, and thank you for your feedback. Anything that I can answer?
Thank you, Kent. Thank you, Katie, for being here this morning, but also for your commitment to the community, for your commitment to being here and your commitment to the well-being of Fergus Falls. It's much appreciated.
We're a community resource, and we're pleased to serve. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kent.
Turn this off now.
Next, we'll call on our chief of public safety, Kyle Berger, to give us an update on traffic requests. Good morning, chief.
Good morning. Excuse me, thank you, your honor, counsel. I just wanted to touch base a little bit on some traffic requests that have been coming in lately and some traffic projects that staff has been working on. We do work very closely, the police department, Brian's team in engineering, and guys crew down at the Public Works Garage on a variety of traffic safety issues. You know, sometimes some of the issues take a little bit longer than we hoped to get accomplished. I think the one that kind of pops out for me right now is Union and Stanton Avenue. I know that that has been an issue for many years. You know, Dan Edwards and I started talking about that concern years ago, and I think, you know, maybe in the next year or two, we're going to, with Brian Self, we're going to get some resolve there with just the number of pedestrian and bicycle accidents, along with automobile crashes that have occurred at that intersection. But, you know, sometimes it's a matter of money, sometimes it's a matter of waiting for projects to come up that align to try to get the best outcome possible. And so again, from time to time, it does take us a little while, but we do eventually get there. I want to talk specifically about a couple of issues. I think council member Ruffer had a request from Petal Fergus Falls at the last committee of the whole meeting regarding reducing speed limits in residential neighborhoods in town. And this came about, I think in 2019, the legislature passed a bill saying you don't have to have a traffic study done, you know, municipalities have a little bit more control in setting speed limits. You know, on the surface, it sounds like a good idea. The reality is, you know, it just, one, I don't think it's warranted, two, I think it's somewhat cost-prohibitive, and I'll get into a little bit more detail on that. But speed is really dictated by other things other than the posted speed limit. It has to do with road design, it has to do with parking, it has to do with line-of-sight And I know Petal Fergus Falls, I like kind of that principle too of trying to keep things as simple as possible. There was, their thoughts was just to post the new speed limit on each of the entrances into the community, and that would take care of the statutory requirement that you post. If you are to reduce the speed limit, you have to post the beginning speed and the ending speed on that roadway. There's certainly roadways within our city where we wouldn't want, like a 25 mile an hour speed limit, you know, Lincoln Avenue, Union Avenue, Vernon, all of our major thoroughfares. It just isn't practical. So when we talk about cost prohibitive, you know, at the beginning of each street and at the end of each street, you'd have to post a new sign. You know, you're probably talking in the tens of thousands of dollars to implement something like that. The other part is, you know, I just don't know if it's warranted. And a lot of this information, Wayne Hurley and I deal with each other on a very regular basis through his job at West Central Initiative. Just recently, Wayne was working on safe routes to school-side of pole, a lot of data for him, just this, I guess it was in March of this year. And this is on pedestrians with bicycle accidents, kind of follow the same pattern. But typically, what we do is we look back five years at accidents within the community. And again, this particular set of data is for pedestrian accidents. But, you know, a typical year, we only have maybe two or three accidents involving pedestrians or two or three accidents involving bicyclists. So in 2016, for example, we only had three, 2017, two, 2018, two, 2019, there was four, and then in 2020 was the last year we looked at, there was only one. So again, I just think personally, it's hard to spend, you know, tens of thousands of dollars trying to address a problem that probably represents less than 1% of the total number of accidents within the community. The other part is a recent study, this is from the Department of Transportation. This was done in 2020, shortly after the speed limit changed, or the law changed regarding the implementation of speed limits. In short, the study just basically says changing the speed limit or changing the sign has little or no impact on changing the speed that is driven on the roadway. And in the study, I just, I found it interesting, you know, some places the speed limit was changed, was reduced by up to 10 miles an hour, but the recorded speed limit driven by the public actually went up. In other cases, they increased the speed, say going from a 30 to a 45 zone, and the speed limit was unchanged by the public. And that kind of goes back to that principle that the roadway, characteristics of the roadway, there's other things that are more relevant or relevant as to how fast people drive or how they should drive. So I guess for Petal Fergus Falls, I would, I would say maybe a better scenario is to identify maybe one or two streets that they feel would be relevant to look at, and we can maybe do some speed measurements and counts on those streets and maybe come up with a plan to identify, you know, maybe one or two streets where reducing the speed limit. But as a whole, it just doesn't make a lot of sense practically or scientifically. And we do, we have had some other requests come along as well for stop signs, other things. I just want to say that there's kind of a little guidebook. We just don't arbitrarily say yes or no. This guide is, again, it's a Minnesota-based group, the Local Road Research Board. It's made up of cities and counties across the state. Locally, prior to his retirement, Rick West was on this technical advisory panel, but it talks about things like, you know, But it talks about things like, you know, how do we go about changing speed limits? How do we go about implementing stop signs? What's warranted? What isn't warranted? So again, there is a process that we do go through. And it isn't just arbitrary, you know, our decisions on what we should do or not do. Brian and I are currently working on, I don't remember now if it's 23 or 32, uncontrolled intersections that we have in town. So right now, that's kind of our focus. I think that will probably take us at least two, maybe three years to really look at each one of those intersections. And when I say that, I think it is important that even though the legislature says you don't have to do a traffic study, that we do collect some type of data at each one of those intersections to ensure that the decisions that we're making are practical and rational. So both Brian and I are looking at some equipment so that we can do those measurements ourself and start updating some of those intersections. But again, I just wanted to address, it seems like, especially now that spring is here, we'll start to get more and more complaints about speed, complaints about traffic noise, a variety of things. I just wanted to kind of explain a little bit to the group as how we go through this process. And there's a little bit of a method to our madness that it isn't just, you know, Brian or I arbitrarily saying yea or nay to some of the requests. I know that was a little bit all over the board, but if anybody has any specific questions, I can certainly try to answer.
I have three different ones. Number one, going east on Stanton, coming up to Union. When you come up there, it's tough to see a bicycle or anything that's on that bridge.
Yes.
They come shooting right out in front of you.
So I'll answer your first question before I forget it. Yes, and that's been the issue is that you have a lot of visual obstructions at that intersection. Not only do you have the bridge, but you have a lot of utilities that are placed immediately at that corner. The other thing is the predominant traffic movement there is to make a right turn. So what happens is you get cars approaching the intersection that are looking to the left, not looking to the right where there's already a blind spot. So the remedy to that, even though guys crews may not like it, is to do the bump out. So that's why you have those traffic bump outs, is to push that pedestrian and bicycle traffic further out into the roadway so that the drivers have a chance to see the conflict coming before there's an accident.
Okay. Number two is where you slowed the traffic down going out by Hillcrest. That has worked. They have slowed down.
Yeah. That, yeah, that's, we were kind of handcuffed at the time of choosing between what was posted there at the time and a 30 zone. I think with this new law, there's some other options. You know, we could look at a 35 mile an hour zone, but I do agree, I think that...
It has slowed it down, definitely. And number three is the stop signs on Concord over by the Eagles where the railroad tracks are. Now that those tracks are not used, do we still need those?
Sure. So those, that's a very good question. There's some others on, I think it's Washington Avenue that kind of cuts through there. So those are put up by the railroad. So the railroad has the authority to control some traffic when it comes to their railroad right of ways. So those are controlled by the railroad, not by the city. And, yeah, you should still stop at the stop signs, so.
Okay. I'm done.
Well, thank you, Chief, for the consideration that you and your department put into it and appreciate the update. With that, we'll move on to public improvement 5353, the 2022 million overlay.
I think we're gonna maybe lose our quorum. And if so, do we want to just push? Does anybody have to leave?
I'm leaving. Justin's taking over for me.
Okay. Okay. As I say, if we are, we can push those items to Monday. And then I'll jump to the Zoom call since that I think needs some action maybe today.
Let's move to that last, the new business item. So we'll allow impaired lakes and waters testing and improvement requests. We'll turn it over to Andrew Bremse.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Real quickly here, I'm gonna introduce Dan Larson and Clarence Johnson. I just learned of this opportunity yesterday, but it is something that is going through the legislature. And there's an amendment that's going to be made at the legislature that may benefit the city of Fergus Falls and Lake Alice. And time is of the essence, so I wanted to allow the opportunity this morning. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dan Larson, and then he will introduce Clarence Johnson as well. And they'll talk about what they're working on and how this may impact the city.
I guess that's me. So good morning, Council members. And thanks for getting me up and going this morning. It's a real opportunity and a pleasure. So my name is, my name is Dan Larson. And I'm a partner, I'm a longtime government affairs specialist and a partner in water quality 3D, which is a newly formed business incorporated earlier this year for the purpose of marketing an emerging water quality treatment technology that has demonstrated some really remarkable results when applied to address some of the state's most stubborn water quality and even aquatic invasive species issues that are facing our state and local governments. We're very appreciative of allowing us to wedge into your agenda today and to talk about something we think the council will be interested in and that we certainly want the council to know about. So I'll just take a couple of minutes, if I might, to frame out the issue. And then I'll turn it over to Clarence, who's gonna answer hopefully some of the questions about what this technology is and touch on some of the successes we've had in brief testing over the last couple of years. So I've worked for a number of years on issues with your outstanding state Senator Boindia-Britson, and who has taken an interest in this technology. You should have a draft amendment before you, I think Andrew mentioned it, that Senator Indubritson directed me to have drafted that appropriates $250,000 to four projects in three local governments. Two to the county of Blue Earth, one to Pipestone County, and one to the city of Fergus Falls. So how did we come to suggest a focus on Fergus? We have word is starting to get out on the water quality, to water quality leaders across the state on this new technology. When we asked, when Senator Indubritson brought this up to me, I said, well, we've got our projects. And we wanted the fund to go directly through a state agency, the Board of Water and Solid Resources, directly to stated projects. No criteria, no applications, just straight pass-through. And that's how the amendment is drafted. So we asked around for leaders in the area, for example, of low oxygen, high algae water body in the region. And they pointed us to Lake Alice. So our scientists checked it out and said, yep, this is a project that's right in our warehouse. We think we can affect your algae concerns on Lake Alice. We're here to let you know that the city is in the running for a grant from this project and that will provide funding for water monitoring and testing and may include non-chemical treatment technologies for impaired lakes and waters that increase the recreational user days by providing water quality dissolved oxygen and related, by improving, water quality dissolved oxygen and related parameters. So I think it's important to note also that our strategy as a company did not include going to the state for state funds. It's nothing we had any intent to do. It's nothing that was in our game plan. But how did Senator Indubritson get involved? Several years ago, before I was with the group, he witnessed an installation. And he asked this year for an update. We provided that update to him in his office. It's been about a month, month and a half. And when we told him about the results, it worked. He said, well, that's when he directed me to draft the amendment. So our purpose this morning is twofold. We want to make you, to introduce you to the company and to ourselves, but most importantly, to let you know about this developing opportunity and to potentially address impairments on Lake Alice through a grant provided by the state. So if you like what you're hearing, we'd like you to do a couple of things or we would suggest it. Number one, you might want to write a letter of support. The plan is to amend a bill that's currently moving through the system. As you may be aware, the legislative pace is picking up. Bills that this would normally go into are all wrapped up. So this will be in the form of an amendment. And an amendment like this is going to take support from leadership, I like to say above the rim, committee chairs and finance chairs. Senator Indubritson thinks he has that support. So that's, so I want to have him have support by these projects for when he stands up to draft the amendment. And if you like what you're hearing, we'll suggest you write a letter of support for that to happen. We think the bill is going to come up early next week. And secondly, to reach out to Senator Indubritson himself. You want to hear from him, what he's thinking, ask him any questions, and just do the normal things that you normally do when a project comes up for the city. Something that's not included in the amendment right now that may be added, and it's reasonable to think it would be, is a report. They'll likely ask you to report on what you're finding. And so I think you can expect that as this moves through the system. But with that, unless there's any questions, and knowing that we've got some time constraints, I'm gonna introduce Clarence. Mr. President, Mr. Council Chair, at this time, if there's any questions, I'll take them. Otherwise, should I introduce Clarence?
Yes, Dan, I think that we'll introduce Clarence, and then we can maybe answer any questions at the very end.
That sounds great. Clarence Johnson comes to us after a long career, during a long career, which we started out, I know enough to remember, but when 3M had its problems with tailings on the North Shore, Clarence worked on that. He worked on the Red Tide in Florida. He's got a deep understanding of water quality issues. And like me, came to this issue and looked at it and said it can't possibly work. But as you drill down in terms of finding out what it does do and didn't do and see with your own eyes, I became convinced, just like Clarence did, that this is a product that has promise. So Clarence, like everyone else, they've got questions about what this does, how it works, and maybe some of the results that we're seeing. Clarence Johnson.
Thank you for having me here. Is my microphone working okay?
Yep. Yes.
Okay. I've had troubles with this in the past. I'm going to go through this relatively quickly. And if there's any questions, you can ask them. Oh, I see my screen is on the screen. I have my photos of Black up in case, but my audio wasn't working here. But you're certainly welcome to call me at any time. Our system is unique in that it treats water problems without adding any chemicals to the water. What we do is we put our water through our proprietary system, and we alter the water chemistry to what's called the electrical double layer. This is a phenomenon in nature where any solid energetic snippets that have a residual charge on it, we amplify that, naturally amplify that residual charge. And that changes the orientation and the relationship of the water molecules to each other. It sort of fact raises the pH of the water. It thereby increases the dissolved oxygen. The ionic stability fields are altered and resulted in a decrease in the available energy for algae. It's called, in scientific terms, the energy for algae. We would normally call it the food for the algae. It's what they eat. In doing so, we restore the natural ecosystem. And these lakes that are infested with aquatic invasive species are trying to return that system, but they're strangled by the algae, which simply takes over the lake and forces out the native plants. We installed the system in Lake Crystal. They ran PETA. And we found that during the summer, as we ran the system, the pH increased, the dissolved oxygen increased, the phosphate decreased. The phosphate is critical for algae growth. And also nitrate decreased. The nitrate is also important for algae growth. And if there's not enough phosphate, it will use the nitrate. But by reducing all of these things, we essentially starved the algae. And algae that's energy deficient does not reproduce efficiently. Therefore, the reproduction of the algae dropped. So you've got less algae reproducing less, which creates even less algae, which creates even less reproduction. So it's a cascading effect that removes the algae. A second, another effect of our system that is a tangible visual effect of our system is that turbidity decreases. And that means that we can see deeper into the water. And in one summer on Lake Olaf, St. Olaf, which is near Wasika, we increased the visibility of the water nearly three feet. So instead of seeing down two feet, the algae was pretty bad that lake, we had two feet of visibility. In the first year, we increased that to over six feet. And we hope this year, or treated again, we'll see even more improvement in that. Another effect of our system is reduction of coliform bacteria. Three lakes in the area near Wasika, we looked at, in St. Olaf, which we're treating with our 3D system, Moon Lake, which is untreated, and Clear Lake, which was being treated clinically because they had a release in the sewer system that was discharged and lost sewage to the lake. And they were treated out with chemicals to decrease the lower coliform. So Moon Lake untreated had greater than 2,500, most probable number, it's called, of coliform forming units. And that's what, and it would stop at 2,500 because that's the top of the scale. Clear Lake, which was being clinically treated, also had in excess of 2,500 MPNs. So Olaf Lake, which was being treated with 3D system, had only 10% of that number, or 259 coliform unit, forming units. We looked also specifically at E. coli for this because E. coli is the most harmful of these bacteria. And the Moon Lake, which is untreated, they had 50 coliform forming units per 100 milliliters. And that's a pretty high number. Clear Lake, which is clinically treated, and you would expect it to kill that off because they're treating specifically for E. coli. That had zero, right in the middle of the area where they had any chemicals. For St. Olaf Lake, the entirety of the lake in this sample was taken half a mile from our treatment system. There was one coliform forming unit, and that is extremely low. Just naturally occurring in nature, you get higher, you get in the, you know, five to eight to 10 coliform forming units. So that was another very beneficial effect. It makes the water healthier for anybody drinking the water, be that people, animals, and fish. So we ran this system in other lakes, Clear Lake, yes, Clear Lake, no, no, sorry. Lake Crystal and St. Olaf, which are two primary lakes, and we ran it in other lakes and ponds as well. we ran it on other lakes and ponds as well. But looking at the effectiveness of Lake Crystal and St. Olaf, who are primary lakes because they had the biggest recreational population around it, we restored the natural ecosystem. And this is shown first by the algae not having the blooms, not growing, large decrease in algae, which enabled native plants to come back. The DLR came to these lakes, and so they were seeing native plants that hadn't been reported in those lakes in over 30 years. As a result of increase in the native plants, we increased their success and competition against algae. And the algae was being reduced in our system. The gray came back. When the native plants came back, the fish came back. Clear Lake Crystal had a carp fishery. And in the autumn, the carp fishers would come in with their nets and pull the carp out of water. They don't do that anymore. The last time they did that was 19, it was 2017. And that's the year that we ran this. And they complained about a decrease in the carp. And the next year, there was virtually no carp. We've seen the bay fish increase and the rough fish decrease for this. Another example of this is that on Lake Crystal, in the winter of 2016 and '17, there was one ice house on the lake during the winter. Two years out of that system, about 100 ice houses on that.
Can I just jump in? Clarence, let me jump in real quick. We're gonna lose a quorum here. So if you could, if you could wrap up in the next like 30 to 60 seconds, give us the high point.
Absolutely.
And then we have to, we have to keep moving here. Thank you.
Okay. So at any rate, we also reduced the algae blooms, and we increased the quality of the water for swimming and for water skiing and for boating. So we put the system in, and it has kept the algae out of Lake Crystal for over three years now. Other lakes would have to treat, would have to treat for two or three years to get it down. And repetitive treatment might be necessary. But it vastly reduced costs because we already got the system restored to the natural system. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Clarence and Dan, for the information. And I had heard, Dan, you had mentioned that we'd like, you'd like for a letter of support from, from the city, and then also to reach out to Senator Englebretson. In terms of timing, we have a council meeting on Monday night. Do we need to take any action this morning, or is there something we can discuss on Monday night to move forward?
I think the council should take all the time it wants or need. If it wants to consider what we've talked about for a few days, I think you're gonna be okay. What I've heard about when the bill is up is early next week, and that could be Monday.
Justin?
If it would, if it would be all right, I guess I would like to propose a motion that we provide that letter of support as requested by Dan and Clarence when it would be best. You know, if we can get it, if we need it, and we can get it together even the rest of this week, that'd be great. So I'd like to make a motion that we provide that letter of support.
I'll second that.
Okay. Thanks for that. Just for point of clarification, are we acting as a council at this, or is this?
Either way, we'll be fine. Yeah, we're just making a simple motion.
So you could put it on the consent agenda.
Make the motion now. We'll have the letter prepared by Monday. And if we have to send it, we'll send it. And then you can make a formal motion on the consent agenda Monday night if you want to.
Very good. Okay. Does that work for everybody? Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion's carried. Again, thanks, Dan and Clarence, for the information this morning, and look forward to a partnership.
Thank you very much.
Sorry. Item number three, we'll go back to item number four, excuse me, on the agenda, Public Improvement 5353, which is 2022 Mill and Overlay Project. Brian?
Thank you, Your Honor. Members, I will keep this brief. These next three items are gonna take too long. This is regards to the 2022 Mill and Overlay Project. We do this on an annual basis throughout the city. We've completed project plans and specifications. I have provided a project location map, but the proposed area for the 2022 season is generally bounded between Lenora Way, Sunset Drive, and Fur Avenue all the way to Somerset Road. So Terrace Drive, Woodhill Court, will be shown on the map that's included in your package. Estimated cost is about $252,000. So we must publicly advertise our bids. I do have a bid opening date set, but not officially yet, but I'm anticipating later on this month. And just like years past, once we get favorable bids, I'll be looking to add more to the project if funds permit. We budget annually $269,208 for this type of work. So sufficient funds are available. So at this time, I'm requesting authorization to accept the project's plans and specifications and to authorize the advertisement.
I'll follow up for that.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thanks, Caroline. Any other questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion's carried. Move that to the consent.
Consent, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number five, easement for Otter Tail Power.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Otter Tail Power approached me in regards to, they're doing some overhead power line replacements that are generally located just southwest of Piscade Dam. They plan on installing new power lines and then removing the old power lines to limit service interruption. They approached us because they do have a overhead easement on a city-owned lot, which is described as Lot 5 Block 1 of the Meadows Plant. We've reviewed this request, and we're very amenable to it. Basically, we're gonna reorient the bearing. I spoke to the city attorney, and what I'm gonna be requesting is just authorize myself and the city attorney to, I'm at the legal description pursuant to Otter Tail Power's request. They've enclosed $1,750 fee, a check, to help reimburse for any city's expenses for this process. So like, once again, I'm just authorizing, requesting authorization to execute this easement request from Otter Tail Power.
Is that staying overhead, or are they going under?
It's still overhead. I guess a quick thing to know is it, the bearing on it is wayward, more westward. So if you look at it, be like, less of an encumbrance on the city-owned property, actually, so.
Go ahead, Scott.
Ryan, I believe that lot, there was some interest. Somebody had expressed some interest in acquiring that lot from the city not so long ago. I don't know that this would have any bearing, you know, on it, but it was, was this lot?
I believe it was a prospect question in, in some, but I don't know the whole background behind that one. But I think this is a benefit to the lot.
I think so, too. And I just wondered if it had any, you know, if anything was coming as a result of their interest in the lot.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Any other questions for Ryan this morning? Brent, no? You want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jim. Any other questions?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion's carried. We'll get with this going on the consent as well. Okay. And then item number six, Public Improvement 5314, Union and Lincoln Avenue Improvement Project. Brian?
Thank you. Yes, the project plans and specifications for this Public Improvement 5314, this is the Union Avenue STIP Transportation Project. It's a resurfacing project we've been working on for quite some time. The project plans and specifications are substantially complete. Currently, the plans are at MINDOT's central office for review and comments. We're awaiting those comments. Once we get those comments back, the necessary edits will be made, and we'll determine the bid opening date. I do have a map, and you've seen this before and everything, but this is a pretty significant 1.45 mile street resurfacing project throughout the limits shown. I did want to point out, that has not, we determined the next slide, Lynn, if I could please, I did include, I wanted to point out what we're doing for downtown Lincoln. It's, it's one area that we've taken a lot of effort in and everything. I just wanted to briefly describe it. I'll open up to any questions in future, too, though. We're trying to maintain traffic through Lincoln Avenue to the best extent practical for our businesses and business owners there. That being said, we're sequencing, doing a detour, essentially allowing work on the north half, let's say, north or south half of Lincoln Avenue from Cascade to Union Avenue, and permitting traffic on the other half for parking and the traffic movements while the contractor is, said, working on the opposite side of the street. Once work has resumed or been completed on the contractor's side, traffic patterns will be switched, and it'll be more of an eastbound movements. We thought this was best to facilitate rather than doing a hard closure, doing all the PEDRAP replacements and everything. So it will be a little congested, but it will be staged accordingly to allow one-way access during paving operations. So just want to point that out, but like I said, we can talk more discussion about it once we get bids. So at this time, I'm just requesting authorization to advertise or accept the project plans and specifications and authorization to advertise for bids.
Any, any questions on the project and/or the keeping traffic flow through that?
I'll follow up for that.
Thanks, Jim. Second. Brent? Any other questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion's carried. I'm just able to go on the consent as well?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not aware of any additional items coming for us this morning. Announcements, we do have our city council meeting on May 2 at 5:30 in the council chambers. And then May 11, again, we'll be back here at 7:00 AM for Committee's whole. Meeting's adjourned.